Really good, so we'll call the St. Cloud Metropolitan Transit Commission Board to order. It is Tuesday, September 19th, and it is four o'clock. Let the record reflect that all members are here and present with the exception of Wake Park. We have any additions or changes to the agenda?
No.
None?
No.
Are you sure?
Positive.
Okay.
Maybe.
All right, we'll probably have something added then. Just checking. Then we will move on to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to do such?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the first is our motion to approve in second. Any discussion hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, that carries. The agenda is approved. Consent agenda, items five through eight.
Motion approved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, the consent agenda is adopted. We are now moving to the open forum. Is there anyone here for the open forum, or anyone online?
There are two people online, nobody's raising their hand. So I'm assuming that neither one of them want to speak. I don't see any indication that they do.
All right. Well, then if we have anyone in the open forum, we will then move on to general business, item nine, consideration of the fiscal year 2024 final budget and capital improvement plan.
Good afternoon, commissioners. There haven't been many changes to the budget as was proposed last month. Again, we're not raising the levy next year. There are a couple of things, though, that I do want to bring to your attention, some changes that are occurring at both the state and federal level. Moving forward, there were some changes in the descriptions of what we can fund at the state level regarding... The first piece is marketing and communications. It really doesn't pertain to us, so it really won't play into any factors that we do personally. But we can... The state has changed the description of what we can use OTAT dollars for as far as advertising. And basically, it has to do with transportation systems that fall under cities. So I'm just going to use Rochester as an example. You can't use state dollars that are designated for transportation to advertise what a great city it is to live in Rochester. So they're kind of getting stricter on those kind of rules. The second piece of legislation that is getting stricter does pertain to us. This piece has to do with you gentlemen sitting at the board. We can no longer use state dollars or federal dollars to fund travel for the commission. So we have always been able to do 80%, 20%, just like all other operating for any travel that was designated for the board. So we are going to have to write a policy that's going to have to bring that forward, stating how we're going to handle that differently. And so in order to do so, we would have to state... The first piece of that would be that 100% of any travel that the board would have to do would be 100% local share. And so I just, first of all, need to know if you guys are okay moving forward with having Metrobus fund travel at all, you know, at the commission level? I would need to know that, knowing that it would be 100% funded at local share.
Well, I think if that's... Both of those items, I mean, the first one, obviously, we wouldn't do, and why would we want to say what the city Rochester is anyway? But if we can't do that, I don't know, do we... It's because of the new interpretation, or maybe it's an old interpretation, but it's new. Do we need a policy on both of those items, on advertising? Do we have a policy on advertising that we have? Is there a need to bring that forward and add what is a requirement already so that there's clarity?
We do have a policy on advertising already. We're going to take a look at that just to make sure that the verbiage is accurate in there, just to make sure that it's clear. I did review it quickly, and I think that we're fine with that in a conversation that I had with OTAT last week, just to clarify that. The policy, our travel policy, isn't specific to the commission's travels, so we will need to bring a policy forward for that. So I am going to draft a policy and bring that forward.
It would be good if you could, since you have two items that were highlighted, for if you could bring both of them back, even if we don't have a change in that. I think we should note that the policy, so it's on record, that we're aware. And I'm just, I think in both, and same with travel, anything that comes up later on, we were aware, we had a meeting here, obviously, but I think we should at least vote to the affirmative, or whatever it might be, in both those areas. On the travel piece, you know, this is no different than, maybe it's the interpretation we've used in the past for the area planning organization, but the APO also, similar entity, which uses primarily federal and state funds, I mean, has a local levy also, or a local, not a levy, contribution.
I was going to say, the contribution.
Yeah, so it's different.
In addition, we have to change what we can contribute with the APO. There are some different changes because our contribution to the APO has also needed to change for next year.
Oh, that needed to change too.
As well.
Well, if you can, you know, those would be helpful for us if these are new interpretations. I think those are things that we should at least have acknowledgement at the board level through some type of action. So it's transparent.
And I do, like, I don't mean to interrupt you, Mayor Clies, I apologize, but I do plan on bringing it forward. So, but the direction that I'd like to bring forward would be kind of based on this conversation. So I guess that's my first question, is again, regarding the travel piece of it, I mean, we can look at that in one of two ways, you know, acknowledging the fact that it would have to be 100% funded with local share. Do you want to move forward with travel, or do you want to just have the policy to state that due to the fact that it's 100% local, we will no longer fund commission travel? It's your guys' decision.
I think as somebody, and I know Rick, Rick's not here, but Rick, John, has done some, you know, I think in cases of it, which is kind of an odd differentiating between the authority that operates the Metrobus, which if you're having, let's say you're lobbying, let's say you're in DC, or if you're going to a conference, folks that actually have to approve the funding of, say, a new bus or a new technology, you'd certainly want them to see that at an eighth, you know, and be, you know, it's interesting that the state differentiates. So it doesn't change staff travel. That can be 80/20.
That's correct.
But the administration of that is not allowed. I think it's odd. I think it's odd, because I know at the city level, that's not the case, whether it's federal or state. I mean, of course, we don't use, we have different budgeting that we use 100% anyway. But the fact that you can use an 80/20 maybe is the thing that's odd, because you'd be using, especially in the lobbying effort, but I can see that from a lobbying effort. But staff, when you're going to a federal conference, or if you're going to be at the federal level, you're lobbying for funding too.
Right.
So, and I can see the prohibition, there's always been a prohibition or trying to be a prohibition about lobbying the state, using state funding is really...
Be careful using lobbying.
Yeah, because that would be a prohibition that clearly would be something you would want to do. I mean, there's been legislative, when I was a legislator, I mean, cities would, and cities do, cities do use funding, and some cities that have LGA will lobby for more LGA, so they're using...
They say advocate and educate.
Advocating, lobbying, whatever it is, it's lobbying, I'll just be clear as to what it is. So that's why having a policy, I think, makes sense. And actually, from the board's perspective, and I'll open this up, but I think having, you know, having that in, it's always been a budget item, I know that. It's been a line item in that. But you have a line item for travel already. I just think if we change the policy, any funding should just come out of that travel budget. It just has to come from commissioners 100%. It would be 20% for any staff that's utilized. I don't think you have to change the budget in any way. And I'll open it up to what other commissioners think, but I don't have a problem with whatever that process is, whether it's the CEO making that decision, or you bring one of those things up to the board making the decision. Either one's fine. We, I think all of our cities operate a little differently in that, how we do that. But, I mean, I don't think you want to exclude the ability, whether it's a conference, APTA is one of the things we've been to, APTA, you know, those are technologies that are new. I know Rick's been to them, I've been to them. I think encourage folks to go if you can't. Yeah, you haven't, but there's no reason you can't. It would probably be helpful sometimes for commissioners to be there, especially if you're bringing something forward. If we're somewhere down the line, we're looking at a new technology. I mean, I remember looking at CNG before we went through on the road of CNG. It was much more helpful for me to see what these buses were like before we built a huge CNG destination and we built all those buses. That, to me, was a helpful thing. And if I would have been there, might not have been the same result, at least at that board level, so I don't see that as an issue. Same thing with lobbying, or advocating, or whatever you want to say. But we're going there, we're lobbying on behalf of the board that we're part of, so I don't see that as a, or advocating for, or answering questions, or whatever that may be. We're not using federal or state funding, so I can probably say that we're diffusing local share. So, but that's my idea. I'd open up to the commissioners what you think about that.
How much has the board spent on travel historically on an annual basis?
Normally, the expense, I know...
Couple thousand, it's a $5,000 budget item, has it ever exceeded 5,000?
I would have to go back and look. I know Mayor Clies goes to Washington DC on an annual trip, and then there's been APTA trips as well, so it's normally a couple of... Oh, 5,000 is more than 5,000.
I guess when it was brought up, I wasn't aware that the board's traveling on behalf of Metrobus.
Oh, yeah.
I think... I mean, if it's going to, if the new regulations require it to be local share, I think we should evaluate what is the share of the travel, right? How do we break down, if someone's going to DC, what percentage of your time is spent, or their time spent for Metrobus versus other entities there? And some of that can be commingled. But I guess I'd like to see us pair that back a little bit more, and maybe not have a policy that says no travel, but could the, on an annual basis, could those projected costs be brought to the board to determine or evaluate at that point in time?
It's kind of what we do at our level.
As we do at the APO.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we do at the city.
Yeah.
Like Ross is going down to Texas or something, and he brought it to the board, to the council for approval or not, and that's 100%, obviously, our money. But here, I don't, I guess I don't have a problem with it. I haven't seen that much travel, I mean, one, two trips a year. I haven't been on one, but just, you know, if we're going to do that going forward, maybe we just simply bring it here.
Yeah, and that's what I would advocate. Transparency, you bring the preapproval. And the way the APO operates, that's exactly the way the APO... The APO operates under whoever chairs the APO goes on behalf of the area planning organization. Anyone that goes with, those cities have usually paid for those trips, or the counties. I've traveled with the APO as a non-chair and been part of that. But when you are, when you are there, then you lobby on behalf of the area pla... Or in that case, the area planning organization.
Right.
If you're there for Metrobus, you're lobbying on behalf of the Metrobus. And those are the meetings you set up, and that's how you focus on that piece. So that's, that would be the, if you're going there, you know, for example, well, I'll speak for the city of St. Cloud, we also lobby on behalf of the city, so we go there on behalf of the city. And then at the same time, quite frankly, we're lobbying on behalf of Metrobus and APO, because we're part of those entities, we're doing the same, we're bringing the same documentation with, but that's a city-sponsored trip. That's an APO trip, or if it's a Metrobus one, then those are Metrobus and city lobbying efforts. It'd be impossible to say for any city that, you know, a member of Congress asks you about a particular part of the city, you're going to say, no, I'm just, you know, here on that. But the focus is what your company is, is the entity that you're traveling on behalf of. So I would say that, yeah, we just, you know, that's the way the APO does. We approve those every, I think, every trip.
Every trip.
APO is a little different, you know, if you want to go that route, I mean, the APO troops travel for everybody. I mean, you could do that and just have every trip. I think that that's kind of diminishing the role of the CEO and the staff to be able to do that. I think that would be the determination they make as an executive in that role. But, I mean, for, at least in this case, especially since it's 100%, and I don't think it makes a difference before, I mean, we could have done this with 80/20, because it's still 80% federal or state funds, they're still funds that I'm paying for as a taxpayer, so I would just want the same accountability and transparency on an 80/20 than I would on 100% property tax base. So I don't have a problem with that, and we can determine that. That doesn't exclude, APO excludes that travel to just the chair. We don't need to do that if there's a situation where it makes sense to, it may be adding a route, or a service, or something that may be unique to a Sartell, or Sauk Rapids, or Wake Park. There's nothing wrong with having a couple of folks travel, or, you know, we, I think you'd want to stay away from having quorum on that, but having a couple people. Rick and I have been to an expo in the past, and that was part of, you know, expos are, you know, travel around throughout, I think, different places. There's an expo, obviously, in Orlando coming up. This, we wouldn't have anybody, because the policy would change before that, so we wouldn't do that. But expo next year is where?
I'm not sure. I'll have to look up.
But it moves around.
It moves around the state. I mean, it moves around the nation.
And John, I think, went to, it wasn't very far, but you went up to Duluth.
Duluth, yeah.
And there was no reason, we wanted someone to go that was able to be in that, especially what's in our state. I don't see anything wrong with paying for a commissioner to be part of that, or we may have a situation where there's a rodeo or something that makes sense to have, but we can, I think, if you want to, you know, that's a consensus, to bring something back to the policy board, where any of those things, any of those, that travel is preapproved. That way, you know, in advance, and it can be approved ahead of time, and then, of course, all the documentation is after. You approve those anyways. You've seen all of those, because it's been in all of the bills we pass, so all that travel has been transparent. But I think having it transparent on the front end is a good opportunity.
I think there's a, in my mind, there's a definite differentiation between an expo and a transit get-together, if you will, than a DC trip. And so if you're going to an expo, it's all about representing this board, right? When you're going to DC, to your point, we're representing multiple boards, multiple organizations. And to me, that's, should that fall back on Metrobus, I would struggle with that a little bit. And not fall back on Metrobus, but fall back on the broader communities that, you know, fund Metrobus. So I would like to see policy guide us towards, you know, the board, covering board expense for travel on an expo, but if we're going to take the, if our residents are taking the share from a DC trip through Metrobus, if you want to go to DC, if you want to go to DC, if you want to go to DC, I feel like our own city budgets should then be able to step up and cover that. Our cities are going to benefit just as much from us being in DC as Metrobus is going to be in DC. Right? Like, you speaking to St. Cloud, you speaking to Sauk Rapids in DC on behalf of Metrobus, or on behalf of Sauk Rapids, I feel like Sauk Rapids is going to carry the weight in that, right? They recognize you as mayor of Sauk Rapids, or me as mayor of Sartell versus me as board member of Metrobus. So if I'm going to go to DC, city of Sartell then should cover my expense to go to DC, would be my opinion.
The challenge you have there is Metrobus, though, if you're speaking for, if you're there and you're going to as a mayor, you're speaking for Sartell. No one's speaking for the whole organization of Metrobus in that capacity. So, and one of the things that's important, I think, especially in lobbying at the federal level, is the access. If you're asking a sitting member of Congress, and maybe, you know, maybe Ryan can get that meeting, or a staff member can get that meeting, but I can tell you, in the experience I've had in 18 years, to get that meeting, if one of the mayors goes, or if the chair of the board of those elected officials is asking for that meeting, the likelihood of getting that meeting with a member of Congress is higher. It's just the reality. It's good or bad, whatever you may think it is, it's the reality. And then you'd be speaking on behalf of a broader entity, not just the city of Sartell, not just the city of St. Cloud, or Sauk Rapids, or Wake Park. You'd be speaking on behalf of Metrobus. That's the APO. It's no different than the APO. We've had the same discussion at the APO many times. And that's why the chair at the APO goes, or the designee, and that's why the, and that's also just part of the access. Now, there are other folks that come off and along with that, that have another item that they may be wanting to talk about, and that's, you know, if it comes up at the same meeting, you know, fine. I mean, the chair speaks on behalf of the area planning organization, and in this case, would be speaking on behalf of Metrobus. And, you know, so those are, those are really, in fact, some times that I've been out there, we met with the transportation folks, we met, we talked about Metrobus funding. We talked about North Star Corridor, this connection, the connection that we have, we talked about alternative fuels that we looked at. Those are all Metrobus functions. We, I can tell you from the city of St. Cloud, we go separately and talk about things that are important to the city, and those are city things. But I can tell you, we also talk about the APO and Metrobus at the same time, because we're doing it as a follow-up. But when you represent the board, and that doesn't mean that I have to, it can be any one of you going on those things, but you're there on behalf of Metrobus. I just think, I don't, you know, again, it's preapproved, and we did make that decision. I think having a voice for the authorization, the authority for the Metrobus is this board. I think that voice is important when it comes to talking to members of Congress or members of the state. And I don't disagree on an expo too, because we're making those financial decisions, but we're also making those decisions from the federal and state. And I, you know, being a former legislator, and no disrespect to any staff, but when an elected official comes from a community and is speaking on behalf of a broader community, there is, I mean, you listen to those folks, they're speaking on behalf of a larger group, and it's, I think, it lends some credibility and some power to it. Not wanting to change what we do with staff, I think it's important for staff to travel, especially on training, I think, even the DC thing, but travel particularly on those types of things that are a benefit to the overall education and training that's involved. I wouldn't want to micromanage that, at least. But here, as long as we discuss it as a board, set those types of parameters, I, you know, I respectfully disagree. I think that may be, that is a role of, and I have no problem with whoever this, in fact, when many times we're, I sat on here in St. Cloud, we used our dollars to send, it was Paul Rinksmuth who chaired this, to a lot of those conferences, and I know he spoke on behalf of the Metrobus, and I think either any of us that went on behalf of the board could do that in a great fashion.
Yeah.
I think it's important that, like with technology and stuff, that you have the opportunity to see different technologies, because we have a different point of view than your staff does, because your staff was focused on one thing. I just wonder if cities like Duluth, whoever bought the electric buses, if their executive board knew exactly that the buses wouldn't work quite the way they want to do in the winter, would they actually approve the vote? Without that education, you don't. And it could be somebody in the staff just, it's a good idea, but we're always, and we just put our hands up, well, no, we learned this, this is not the, it's not the time right now, so I think it's important to be able to just, to go to things, have that available.
And I absolutely agree with that point. I think that's a tangible learning experience that we as a board can get.
Yes.
I struggle with a annual trip to DC to just keep our name in front of someone. And that's where I think bringing it to the board for approval, if we have a specific ask from the federal level, the state level, let's outline what our ask is, what we're going to be lobbying for, educating for. And then we can say, hey, to go after that, we need to invest travel into doing that from a board level, whoever's the best asset to go do that. But to just have a blank, hey, we're going to go to DC each year, and we'll represent Metrobus, and I don't mean to genericize that that much, but to me, it's like, how do we value that, or how do we determine that ROI on the investment of sending our board member there versus sending CEO? And so I think there's a level of accountability we can have back to say, hey, what is our purpose there? What is our specific ask or lobbying effort? And then let's put the funds towards achieving that.
If I may, chime in, this chair, if I may, to Ryan's statement. I know, like, specifically, I'll just use last year as an example, Dave and I, we went to DC, and we met with Amy Klobuchar, Tina Smith, Tom Emmer, talking about transportation. Sometimes, that FaceTime is important too as well, because you just don't want to go to DC just when you want to ask for something, because everybody's coming with the same ask. But having that relationship, I feel, is important, and that proof, that proof evident last year, when we went out and we met with Tina Smith, and then as a result of that meeting, Tina Smith asked me to come back and testify before her committee, because she was the chair of the Transportation Health Urban Housing Committee.
Yep.
And she wanted me to testify before Congress on importance of transportation in greater Minnesota, because she knows that our funding is part of OTAT, which is part of the greater Minnesota transit funding in relation to the IIJA. So because of that, because of that meeting, I was on her radar. Now, if I didn't go to that meeting, if I didn't go meet with her to have that FaceTime, I wouldn't be on her radar. But because of that meeting, I was invited to come back and testify. And as a result of that testification, it just, me testifying is just ensuring that the funding is still coming to greater Minnesota. So sometimes it's also important to have FaceTime, not necessarily only go see Amy Klobuchar or any member of Congress, just because you'd be begging for money, or not begging, begging, asking for money, you know, asking is a better word, but you just don't want to go and just only see them when you want something, because everybody's coming up the same way. Sometimes having these just one-on-one FaceTimes is valuable, because you never know, it's all about the timing. Because trying to get a meeting, like, I may be able to get a meeting, I could call Tina Smith's office right now and get a meeting with her tomorrow if she's available, versus, let's say, John Libby calls tomorrow, asks for the same meeting, and he can say, I'm the secretary of the board, he may not get that same meeting. Even with Tom Emmer. Tom Emmer, for example, he's the majority whip right now. And APTA, they can't even get a meeting with Tom Emmer. They're coming to me asking if I could set up a meeting with Tom Emmer, because for whatever reason, Tom Emmer represents St. Cloud, not for whatever reason he represents St. Cloud, but they know that I'm in his district, so they want me to get access to Tom Emmer, so he could get access to APTA, so APTA can have access to him, so they can have this greater discussion about overall transportation funding, not just in Minnesota, because of his position in Congress. So just things like that, I find is valuable, and is important just to continue to have those, have that FaceTime.
I am totally aligned with you on that. This board, the people on this board are going to change, hopefully, a lot more than you're going to change, right? So to your point, hey, we did a trip, the return on the investment is now you, you've built connections that you'll be able to leverage in getting additional FaceTime, ensuring funding. I'd rather take the money away from us and give it to your travel to say, go keep meeting with them, stay, get more FaceTime, right? At this point, from the relationships you've been able to build, I feel like we might be riding coattails if we join you on a DC trip to go meet with Tina Smith, right? Because you've built a great relationship.
Right, but I also built it because of Dave.
100%. And so the investment that the board and the organization invested in Dave to travel there, to make the introduction to you, has proven its benefit. We now take that benefit and we move forward with it. If there's another meeting that you can't get, and someone on this board needs to be part of it to get a meeting set, it's a hell of an ROI for us as a board to say, we're going to send someone to DC on behalf of Metrobus to make the introduction to Ryan, so that Ryan can carry the organization forward.
Although, the way we, the way we set up those meetings, and that's the way that we've always set up those meetings, is we do have a federal presence in DC.
Right.
The city of St. Cloud uses a lobbyist who sets up those meetings.
Right.
And we've used that same one the APO uses. Metrobus does not. Metro does not. Metrobus rides on the tail of St. Cloud.
Yeah.
Because we fund that. And so we have no problem with that, because we're part of Metrobus, we want to make sure Metrobus is thriving and is operating in all of the area jurisdictions. So we set that up through that way as a collaboration to do that. I, and it's, and it's really, you know, it's immaterial, I mean, well, it's, I want to make sure that whoever is sitting here or on this board has the ability, in a case, you're right, things change. Members of Congress change, US senators change. But I want to make sure that those people who are making the decisions, and it is an important decision, because what percentage of the funding that we've spent on Metrobus is federal and state dollars versus local?
It's 80/20.
80/20.
Yes. So the vast majority of the money that we receive is the responsibility of the federal government and the state government. So, and we as elected representatives of our communities are responsible for the dollars that we're matching in that 20%. I do not want to make sure that Sartell is cut off of that access to our federal and state dollars, because I'm still presenting 20% of that. I think it would be, it would be cutting off that connection that you have with your federal representative. I'm fine, I trust Ryan 100% to do that, but I think that there still needs to be the 20% that we as an organization... to be the twenty percent that we as an organization, because we're putting up our tax dollars, and if I'm going to advocate that tax dollars to somebody else, I'm not, I don't know if that's something Sartell would want to do. I wouldn't want to do that. I think us being at the table is important, and whether that's in DC. I'd love for all of our congressional folks to, I mean, the fact that we in St. Cloud hire somebody to lobby, we only do that in, at least now with the federal government, we don't do that in state, because we can drive there. But we do that in the federal government, because we don't have the ability to do that. Metro Bus has said no to that, and I agree with that. I don't think that's necessarily something we do, because other cities can do that. We can pick that up through a different, through a different way. If Ryan was chair of the APO, then he would be going through the APO in that area, but the APO doesn't set that piece. So I think to have the full voice of the organization that we're part of, the five of us are responsible to the taxpayers, both at the federal and state dollars we're using, because we approve the budget at the federal and state level. I think we need to be in communication with those folks at the federal level. And right now, the only access we have normally is to go to Washington, and I wish they were here all the time, that would be great, but I do not want to cut off the access, and I don't want to cut off the folks that I represent as taxpayers from that ability. So I don't see it as a, it's certainly not a junket to go to Washington D.C. I prefer not to go to Washington D.C. anytime, any one of these years, but I think it has a benefit to Metro Bus. We're a strong supporter of Metro Bus, we're not going to walk away from Metro Bus in any way, nor would we even think of walking away from Metro Bus. But we, in order for Metro Bus to survive, need to be partners at the table, at the federal level and at the state level, and I've got to be at the table, and I think all of you should be at the table, whoever is chairing this organization or a part of the organization. It doesn't have to be me going to DC, it could be another member being part of that, and I have no problem with that. But I don't think we want to cut off our constituents and our taxpayers from the folks that are, that are putting in the eighty percent. We're still putting in twenty, I don't want to cut off that access.
I think it's important too to get the right people to go.
Right.
I've been with the chamber group, and there's so many hanger-oners that don't say anything, just came for the pictures. That's a waste of time. I've been there, and I don't want to say I'm a loudmouth, but I get my voice in there. I was with, for the APO, and that's, that was my job. I understand what my job is, is represent the APO or whatever it is, and talk to the officials there, and there's a lot of people just hanging on and stuff. She just, it's not a fun trip particularly, it's a little work.
Right. I know, like when Dave and I go, we actually meet with the actual person and not with the staffer. So that's another advantage of having that access and that partnership, because when we go to DC, we're sitting in the office of Amy Klobuchar for thirty minutes, we're sitting with Tom Emmer for an hour, we're sitting with Tina Smith for thirty minutes. You know, we have actual FaceTime, not just the staffer. Like in the chamber trips, we've been on the chamber trips, and sometimes you just meet with the staffer, there's like fifty of us in a cramped room, all fifty people can't get their, can't get their acts across the table. But when Dave and I go, we just go specifically just to have the FaceTime, so we can talk Metro Bus business. So that aspect of it by itself is, to me, is valuable, because we have direct access to the actual congressional person that we're meeting with.
And the lobbying in DC is important. I mean, most of the trips I've taken to DC over the time that I've been mayor, I paid for it myself, because I believe it's important to the community I represent. I just don't want to cut off that access to whoever's sitting in this chair or any of these chairs, because there's nothing exclusive that says the chair has to go. I would say it would be a great opportunity to have a united effort in some of the areas, depending on who the representative is, and it may be, it may be somebody that represents one of the communities that has a greater influence, you know, potentially on some, maybe one of you will be in Congress, and maybe that's a, that's a way to do that, but, you know, at the state level, we all have different representatives at the state level that we rely on. I mean, it may be, I certainly rely on some of the representatives that are representing other cities that's not St. Cloud, and I'm sure Sartell and Sauk Rapids and Wake Park expect to have the representation from somebody who happens to represent St. Cloud that might be in a different position, majority or minority, whatever it may be. I think building upon however that is best done, as long as the board makes those decisions ahead of time, I don't see a challenge in board making a decision each time that there's a travel authorization be brought to the board. Let's have the discussion, lay out the parameters, and then agree with it. I wouldn't want to cut off the opportunity for the future for somebody sitting at this table from being able to represent their constituency.
And I don't think we've, I don't, I've been here, I've lost track of time, eight years, nine years, eight years?
About eight.
Something like that. I don't think it's been, it's not an abuse issue at all. I just would like to see it, like, at least I can only speak for Sauk Rapids, when Ross, our city administrator, goes to Austin, Texas this year, I think it's coming up, he brought the agenda, I know what he's doing, it kind of piqued my interest, but I'm not going to go, but he certainly can. And I don't want to cut anybody off either, I don't think we would, but I just would like to see it ahead of time. I don't have any other issues with it.
That's what, I agree. Yeah, I'm aligned with that.
Just bring it here.
Yeah, there's no intent on cutting anyone off of it.
No.
Or a future board off of it, it's maybe creating more accountability to what are we going to achieve, and then the board can decide at that point in time.
Yeah, nobody's, I don't think we've abused it, I don't think that's why the rules changed.
No, no.
Not here. I mean, we're pretty conservative.
One trip a year.
And, I mean, I could throw something out there, I mean, Ryan, you were there last year when our senators came from Washington to the airport. They knew you, it's from those trips.
Right.
They didn't know me from Adam. But he used you, I think you introduced me to Tina, one of them. I think you did the other one.
Klobuchar.
Yes, because I haven't interacted, I know Tom Emmer, and I know our local, but we've actually reached across to the St. Cloud's representatives, because with the political structure the way it is nowadays, we've got two Republicans representing Sauk Rapids, and we didn't get, let's just leave it at that. We reached across to co-author something with a Democrat, and I don't care if they're in our district or not, it's still the area, so.
And that will always.
I used you to introduce me to one of them.
And those things will always change, and whoever sits there will always change, and I think, I think that's an important piece. You know, we hope Ryan stays here as long as he possibly can and will, but the members in Congress will change, and the members in St. Paul will change, and I think that that's the beauty of having an organization like this. We represent, you know, different cities. We can build upon that for each other, because our interests are still a common interest. For this case, it's Metro Bus, and we, you know, I would hope that, and I would hope that when you're talking to folks, you know, the transit is part of that joint effort that we do, and no different than the APO. APO is another example, and that's where we had a lot of those discussions, because the APO goes out there and does all of our road projects, all of them, and we're relying on one person to do that, and that's why that shifts, it always helps shifts with the chair in those cases, but we've had that same discussion about bringing other folks. I wish the APO would actually probably bring a few other folks, it would be a broader perspective, but, you know, here's a smaller, it's a smaller group, it's a smaller focus of what we do. But I don't disagree, Ryan, that it should be focused on, focused on Metro Bus, and if we can do that, create that relationship, I think it's great.
Thank you.
You got enough correction there?
The longest board meeting in four years, but you didn't see that coming.
Well, I don't know about your budgets, though we spend the most money on the smallest dollar amount, that's normally what it is. But transparency is important, and that's, I think this is good. And this is a, this is a state, a federal change or a state change, which I don't necessarily agree with. I think it's kind of ridiculous when, you know, we're all representing the same entity, whether we're here or we're in staff.
Still accountable for the money.
We're accountable for the money, and probably more so. We're held accountable by the folks in the city.
Thankfully, our levy's staying flat, so we can breeze through that.
So, back to that, actually, again, not many changes, a little bit of tweaking here and there, but otherwise, nothing significant changed from the preliminary budget that was brought last month. No increase to the levy, no changes to the CIP, so just looking for approval for the 2024 final budget and CIP. And then if you want to do number ten at the same time, then we would be looking for approval for setting the final 2024 resolution for the tax levy.
Do we both at the same time?
Can we do both, or they have to be separate votes?
Ryan, since I didn't start it that way, we'll probably have to do separate.
Two separate votes, okay, so is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved, resolution ten twenty-three zero.
Actually, it would be number nine first, I'm sorry, the budget for.
The first one, yeah, the one we were talking about.
Okay, motion approved.
Which through all our discussion, we didn't raise the spending at all. All we did is clarify a policy, so.
Was that a motion?
That's a motion. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, for item number nine, consideration of fiscal year 2024 final budget, is there any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that carries. Resolution, item number ten, the resolution 2023 oh eight, setting final levy on taxable property in the transit area.
I think a motion to approve.
Second.
Seconded. That'll be correspond very well with the budget, so if there are no further discussion, we will call the question, is there, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, that carries. Item number eleven, consideration of liability and workers' compensation insurance policy renewal update.
Good afternoon, commissioners. We are up to renew our liability and workers' compensation insurance policy effective ten one. We did see a slight increase, four point six percent compared to the same coverage last year, and the majority of that increase is due to liability premium increase based on standard rate increases and an increase in payroll. We actually did see a decrease in our workers' compensation premium of approximately three percent, and that was due to a reduction in claims experience in our EMOAD window. This is just informational.
Any questions on that information? Okay, then we'll move on to department update. IT, obviously we've got a bunch of new screens.
Yeah, yeah. Just a couple of quick tidbits for you for the IT department update. I'll start with the really good news is, we are fully staffed. Our department is two, so.
Fifty percent increase.
Ken does a tremendous job in the IT department with us, so like I said, that's really good news. Ken's been here four years, something like that, so he's been here a while, so that's really good. It did, like I said, you notice the screens in here, this is part of one of the new projects that we worked on, where we're upgrading our AV equipment in a couple of our conference rooms. I did notice during the meeting today, we do have a couple of bugs we need to work out of it yet. Apparently if you move over here, it picks up your motion over here, so we'll have to turn the sensitivity down on that. But overall, they seem to be working really well. Like I said, we did this one, and we did some technology in our mobility center as well, we updated some of our AV equipment in there. We are going to be switching over from WebEx, which is what is going on now for the meetings, to Teams. We've settled on Teams as our official company platform, so we will be eliminating the WebEx licensing and using our Teams licensing on that. I think Kellen wanted to roll that out next month, I think October, so the platform will change a little bit, just stay aware of it. I think everybody's used Teams as well, so.
Have you set up dedicated training for Rick at all?
We'll get him his tablet, he'll be good. So, some of the other projects we've done, we implemented a new on-premise phone system. Our old phone system actually was end of life by the manufacturer, and no longer supports it, so we had to implement a new phone system. We did that in June, so that got rolled out, that worked well. We're updating some of our software, we're moving it to the cloud, we recently moved our maintenance and finance software to the cloud, and we're going to be updating our, the software that runs our Fuel Master CNG fueling, that will also be upgraded, moved to the cloud, that's the trend now with everybody, so everything new is cloud-based or hosted. That's just, all the vendors are moving to that. And as I'm sure you're aware, we're working on replacing our HR and payroll software, and we're actually working with a company now to finalize the contract, and hopefully we will have something on that soon that we can sign and move forward with that project, so that's nice. I did run a couple of, just FYI, kind of trivia tidbit things for you. I looked at our email, I looked at the amount of external coming email, not inter-office email, just external email, and approximately seventy-eight percent of our email is what I would call valid or legitimate email. Twenty percent of it is spam, and two percent of it would be a threat, like a virus or malware or something. So I found that interesting, that twenty-two percent of our email is just junk right off the bat even before you get it, and that gets filtered out. And then from a technology standpoint, we do have approximately ninety-three workstations, we have eleven physical servers, twenty-three virtual servers, and three programs that we host in the cloud. With that, I stand for questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Sounds good. So that actually, for Teams meetings, moves, the cameras move along with whoever's talking at the end of the line.
So the theory is, is it's supposed to be based off of motion and sound, and I think because we're closer than you are, it's, when we move, it's picking us up, so, but it's supposed to pick up the area that has the motion and the sound. I think we need to tweak it a little bit, this is the first commission meeting that we've had. We've used it.
As long as we keep moving up here, we should hold the camera?
Yeah. When I step off the design. Then I'll go back. I think it's because I'm closer that it's picking me up instead of you guys. Like I said, I'm sure there's some adjustments they can make on that. This is the first big meeting like this we've done. We've had some office meetings, some staff meetings and stuff, but we don't typically take up the entire room when we do that, and it's worked well for those, for us. This is the first one where we've used the entire space like this, so.
We installed these ceiling speakers, microphones here, and they do pick up who is talking, or they can be dialed to who is specifically talking, and differentiate this close, which your camera system should tie to that.
Yeah, it does, like I said, I just think the sensitivity needs to be adjusted, that it's, the closer it's picking.
Yeah, but like if I interrupt him, it should, the camera should also switch to me.
It should pick you up.
But there's a, yeah, configuration.
So, yeah, like I said, we'll travel in there, we get it.
About a year.
But it should follow, it should follow around the room when you're talking, your own sound movement.
Yeah.
So, it'll be really nice compared to what we used to have. And the meeting, the feedback I've got from the meetings we had, especially with the microphones, it's just tremendous compared to what we used to have. People can actually hear what's going on in the room and understand, where before we always had issues with, you know, the poor quality of microphones that we had. So, like I said, lots of, lots of good feedback on the microphone part so far.
So you're recording the meetings differently then too, than just recording them through there?
We could record, we.
They don't see a little recording.
Oh, you still do have that. Yeah.
Just our safety backup, yeah.
Lost the backup.
Yeah. That we talked in terms of, but we could record the whole Teams meeting, I think, probably, but I don't know, at least I haven't been in any part of those discussions in terms of, but if we could, it's a possibility that we could definitely look into.
Yeah, and when Kellen gets, Kellen's in Idaho, when he gets back, we'll talk about it. He had other things on his mind.
Half the department's gone.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, that brings us to the end of the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So will be.
Second.
Second. Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, we are adjourned at four forty-four fifty-two PM.